Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. First up, we're going to just change a little bit. Town manager Pardue has a statement he'd like to read.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. So I'm reading this on behalf of Chief Putnam, who is unable to be in attendance this evening due to being at training. So this memo is addressed to town manager Pardue, select board members in the town of Wells residence. First and foremost, I would like to apologize for not being there in person to read this statement, as I'm currently away at training. Back in May, I announced a wait-and-see approach regarding becoming credentialed under the memorandum of agreement, MOA, for the 287G Task Force Model between Immigration and Customs Enforcement and the Wells Police Department. This MOA was entered into as an additional tool, one of many, that supports our mission to protect the officers serving this community and to help ensure they return home safely to their loved ones at the end of their shift, just as I hope you all do at the end of your workday. Law enforcement has evolved significantly over the years, and both the command staff and I take great pride in equipping our officers with the training and resources necessary to do their jobs effectively and professionally. I have consistently maintained that politics and policing should remain separate. Unfortunately, as of late, these lines have become blurred. Considering recent events over the weekend, and with the safety of Wells residents and visitors as our priority, I have made the decision to withdraw from the participation in the 287G program with Immigration and Customs Enforcement. I want to make it absolutely clear that the Wells Police Department will continue to support our federal partners and uphold the law as appropriate. However, our involvement in the MOA 287G Task Force Model is hereby terminated effective immediately. Thank you, Chief Putnam.
All right. Next up, we have a public hearing on the referendum articles to be voted by secret ballot on November 4th, 2025.
Mike's probably up first.
I know, since I'm sitting here, so I know that. I have my books out in front of me, and the first item to consider is Article II on the Comprehensive Plan Update. The existing comprehensive plan was adopted by the town in 2005. In 2019, an ordinance was passed by referendum to establish a Comprehensive Plan Update Committee. That committee was formed in 2020, had a little bit of an absent period due to COVID, but reconvened in the end of 2020 and 21, and has spent the last four or five years working on an update to the comprehensive plan. Several public hearings, public informational sessions were held, and ultimately joint workshops with the Board of Selectmen as well. And they recommended to send it on to the Board of Selectmen to continue their putting on the ballot, which you did, and is on the ballot for a couple of weeks from now. So the comprehensive plan has been published, it's been on the website, it's been on file with the clerk's office, town manager's office, and at the public library.
Thank you. Any public comment on that referendum article? Yes, it's just on that?
Yes.
Yes, okay, yep.
Good evening. My name's Joe Hardy. I'm a longtime resident of the Tannic region of Wells. My comments tonight are not really directed to this body, because you've already made the mistake of passing on a really poor Comprehensive Plan Update. My comments are for the public, or any voters, any voters who might be listening this evening on cable or watching on cable. Right from the beginning, this update was doomed because the select persons chose the people who are on the committee. Whom do they choose? Mostly men, mostly people in the building trades and real estate. Basically, a group of people who are not representative of the town. It did not represent the town's diversity. Consequently, they created a document that does not represent the town. I and others attended all the public forums, as well as many other meetings and public hearings, made extensive comments and suggestions, but with little impact on the plan. The committee members simply ignored information and opinions which clashed with their own. The so-called "public hearings" were a farce. The vision statement for the update is not a vision statement at all. Read it. It is a rerun of an earlier statement. It is not aspirational. It will not help guide the town through the years ahead. The plan itself does not adequately respond to the rapid growth in Wells. It does not adequately address the vexing problems of traffic on Route 1. It does not say anything about diversity and how we will accommodate the different cultures of people who will be on our doorstep in the years ahead. It does not address poverty in Wells, and there is poverty in Wells. It does not adequately address the tremendous need for workforce housing. And finally, and overriding all of what I've said, the updated plan only gives lip service to the gravest threat facing our town and our planet. It does not mention greenhouse gas emissions, nor set any goals for reducing those emissions. It does not show a path forward for transitioning the town's structures or the town's vehicles to renewable energy. It does not speak to the need to help educate the townspeople on the challenges ahead in our warming world. And why not? Because only two members of that committee would admit that we had a climate crisis. And one of those two is Jim Smith, the other one is Linda Grenfeld. No one else thought we had a climate crisis. So how could they possibly create a plan to guide the town in the 10 or so years ahead? They could not. And that's why I think this sorry update of a plan needs to fail with the voters, and I urge them all to vote no on it. And I'm willing to spend my time and my skills writing to help rewrite this plan, because there are parts of it that are acceptable, but overall, it is not. Thanks for listening.
Anyone else wish to speak on that one? All right. We'll move on to the next one.
I think that's mine, okay. But Mike's always a safe word.
Yeah, just say Mike and want you to speak.
So this is to the proposal given in the referendum, change the town clerk position from elected to appointed. The chronology on that is Chapter C, Chapter Charter of the Charter, Section 11.01, Elected Officials, Town Clerk. You'll recall that Brenda Lehman, and before her, her sister Jessica, and before her, their mom, have served as elected town clerks for many, many years. The way this evolved was Brenda let us know that she was going to be retiring. She was re-elected in June of 2023. She retired from her position in March of '24. So we placed the ballot question before the voters in June of '23, and it passed, but it did not meet the 30% threshold, which is approximately 2,100 voters, the 30% of the last gubernatorial election. So therefore, it passed, but it didn't. And then in November of '23, the question was again put on the ballot, and it failed. Many voters citing they thought that Brenda would lose her job, not understanding that she was intending to retire. The board, under the authority of the charter, appointed someone, Mary Beth Pordon, who still serves in that position upon Brenda's retirement. Mary Beth has served in that role for approximately two and a half years, and by all accounts, has served very well, and I can attest to that. And elections, a number of them now, have been under her watch and have gone extremely well. So this matter is coming back before the voters, seeking support for moving to an appointed position from the current elected position. Probably quick summary.
Any comment on that article? Yes.
Hello, I'm Peggy, a resident of Wells, and I would just like to express some concern about moving to an appointed position. I think that those of you who are sitting here as select board members have been elected, and I think, I hope, the town has done a good job electing you. I would like to think we could also do a good job electing a town clerk. I mean this in no way as a negative reflection on the appointment or on the person doing the position, but I think it sets a somewhat dangerous precedent to change a policy so that an employee, even a good employee, is kept in the town. I think there is an advantage to it being a resident of Wells, no offense to Mike Pardue, but I think it serves us well when that happens. And my understanding is that there is training available on a county level and a state level for new town clerks. So I think, for me, that addresses the concern of someone's ability to handle the position well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair? One point I should also bring up that I overlooked. Both Brenda and her sister Jessica have publicly supported moving to an appointed position, and they cite the reason for that as the complexity of the job, and all of the detail that it takes, and that for that reason, they feel as someone that has many skills and qualifications would be a proper consideration. And that's not to comment one way or the other, I just wanted to add that from our past elected clerks.
Is it appropriate if I speak and say?
We wait till we close, and then we can talk on the articles. See, anyone else?
Was he going to ask as a select board member or member of the?
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, we're going to speak to it, I'll start.
Any other on that article? Seeing none, move on to the next one.
One of the mics.
This one's me. This is Article IV on the ballot, and it's concerning changes to our accessory dwelling unit ordinance spurred on by the passage of LD 2003 up at the state level. The town is revising its ordinance. Some of the high points of it, or points of it, significant points, are that now accessory dwelling units would be allowed on non-conforming lots. It would be allowed, they would be allowed in all zones that allow residential uses. They'd be allowed to be detached, so you could have a detached accessory dwelling unit. It would allow the owner to occupy either the main dwelling or the accessory dwelling unit. Size would increase from 600 square foot to 800 square foot for an allowance. Currently, it's restricted to 600. And there's also a restriction that the minimum occupancy or lease period be six months. So those are the significant changes to the ADU ordinance.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions on that? Any comments? Sorry, not questions.
My name is Cheryl Mills, and I'm a resident of Wells, and I just want to support particularly the last item that was mentioned, and that was the minimum occupancy of six months. Given the housing crisis that all of us are experiencing statewide across the country, we do not want to add more short-term rental units, despite the fact that I know we're a tourist town. But we need housing for people who want to live here. So thank you.
Anyone else? See, oh, sorry.
My name is Scott D. Felice. This, and I'm sure you've heard me speak out against this in the past. I would be much more comfortable with an ordinance that would allow us to designate where we want these to appear and not where the state of Maine wants them to appear. Route 1's already a mess, the beach is already a mess. Adding all these ADUs down in this area is going to cause issues. They're going to be used as short-term rentals, despite all of our best efforts. People are going to try to sneak around it, and we all know that they're going to. So I would beg of you to vote this down in place of something that makes sense for the town. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go to Article, referendum number five. Which Mike wants to take out, this one?
Article V is another zoning change to our existing affordable housing ordinance, again spurred on by changes at the state level due to LD 2003. Slight changes, before it was restricted to just RA zone. Now such developments would be allowed in the RA, RC, and GB. And affordable housing complexes get a density bonus, currently in the ordinance, of two times the underlying density allowance, and it would be going up to 2.5 times.
Thank you. Any comments on that referendum? Seeing none, we'll go to Article number six.
Article six is a change to our sidewalk ordinance that's currently in place. We currently require sidewalks along Sanford Road between the train station and Route 1, and then along Route 1 from the library up to Drake's Island Road. So that's currently what I call our sidewalk overlay district, where sidewalks are required if you're doing a new commercial development, you have to install a sidewalk on your property. The changes would expand that to all of Route 1 and Chapel Road and College Drive. There is a change to the construction standard. Instead of the paver units, it can be a concrete sidewalk. And it also eliminates the sidewalk development fund, because in the past, you could have an option of building it or putting to a fund, and the ordinance would require it to be built. And it also includes the construction of a new dwelling as well, which triggered the need for a sidewalk.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, we'll go to Article number seven.
Article seven is me again, and this is regarding the town coming to a boundary line agreement with a private property owner. The plan is up on the screen, and to give a little background on it, the town in 2013 bought conservation land that's on this side of the green line. Just call up a map. So this is the Tilton Conservation Parcel. It's adjacent to the Great Heath. It's on the Maryland River, so it has a lot of significance, and the town purchased it for conservation land, as I said, back in 2013. At that time, we had a survey done, and the surveyor recognized that the property line in this area, based on the language of the very old deeds, was really undiscernible. Couldn't find enough field evidence, lines of occupation. The old descriptions were undefinable as well. So the comment on the boundary survey that was produced at that time was that a recommendation for a boundary line agreement was suggested or recommended. More recently, the budding property owner had a survey done as well by a different surveyor, and that different surveyor came to the same conclusion, that the property lines highlighted in this area, the deeds cannot confirm their location on the ground. So the proposed boundary line agreement sort of splits the difference between some of the lines that have been looked at in the past, and evenly splits any areas of question along the green line. And they're nice straight lines. We like straight lines. So anytime the town has a change to our property line or our property, that has to go to the voters for approval, which is why it's on the ballot.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moving to second, I'll favor close the public hearing, 5-0. Any select board comments?
Yeah, well, I'd like to comment on two items. One is the changing the town clerk to an appointed position as opposed to an elected position. And I will say that initially, in the first two votes, I actually voted against the change. But I'm going to tell you that my experience with that department and the professionalism of that department, because we have a seasoned professional in that department who had the opportunity to be vetted, have knowledge of that person's experience, it's, that part of it has been very, very valuable to the town. I can see the possibility of a huge problem if somebody without any experience whatsoever runs for that office, gets elected. I could see chaos. It's a complicated position, as there's a lot of regulations that have to be followed and the like. I was in the office about a week ago to pick up my absentee ballot, and you know, I walked in there, and as I'm walking in, a gentleman was walking out, and what he said was, this gentleman said, "Boy, this office really acts professionally." And to them, I said, "I'll second that motion." So I changed my position on it, and I think it's the only reasonable way to go. Then, yeah, second one, with respect to the accessory dwelling units. We spent a lot of time on this select board to put restrictions in this article to see that they're used as rentals, to see that they're used as for housing, not as short-term rentals. And sure, somebody can flout the law, but that doesn't mean you don't put up stop signs, because somebody's going to run a stop sign. You put significant penalties in the rules, which we will do at some point if this thing gets passed, and if somebody uses an ADU as a short-term rental, they would be subject to significant penalties. And so I think, you know, the intent is to have those be regular, to serve the housing shortage, and that's the way we crafted it.
Any other comments on any of the articles?
I'm looking forward to voting for the sidewalks.
No, and just to touch on LD 2003 again, where those couple of proposed ordinance changes came from. I mean, we unfortunately don't have the leeway to be able to make any changes, because we're bound by not only state law, but our own charter to follow state and federal law, and the state has said that we have to adopt that, so we're legally bound to do that. Of course, the voters can vote how they want, but that's our obligation as a municipality.
Which I will say kind of put us in a tough position, because we hear how people are so upset with the vast building of everything in a town of Wells, and then 2003 lands in our lap, and we have no control over the expansion at this point for those kind of houses. So just understand that we did what we could, but our hands are locked with the law.
All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public hearing to amend the General Assistance Ordinance appendices A through H for 2005 to 2026 in compliance with the state model General Assistance Ordinance.
Mike, this is really administrative, something you handle every year as income levels increase, so that people can qualify at a higher level.
Any comments from the public on this? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and vote to amend the General Assistance Ordinance appendices A through H for 2025, 2026 in compliance with the state model General Assistance Ordinance.
Second.
Seeing none, favor, 5-0 Cindy. Next up, Chef Nerd LLC, doing business Sea Salt Fry Company, 231 Post Road, Wells, application for full-time beer and wine and spirits liquor license. This is a new, anyone from the public wish to comment? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor? 5-0 Cindy. Hopefully, that one does well at that spot. It's been jinx lately, it seems like, but hopefully do well. Seacoast Pizza and Pasta, doing business at Seacoast Pizza and Pasta, 901 Post Road, Wells, application for a full-time beer and wine liquor license. This is a renewal. Any questions from the public, comments? Seeing none.
I move to close the public hearing and grant the license.
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor, 5-0 Cindy. Next up, we have good news. You want to go first, Mike?
Yeah, I'll lead with one. It could come under my report, but I'm going to lead with this. I'm pleased to share that following a significant number of layoffs at the main state library, to include the two youth consultant positions, the state library created a one-year library development position called a specialized services librarian. The focus of the position is on the enhancement of youth services in order for youth librarians to have access to resources and continuing education. The new librarian sought to create an advisory board. There was an application process in which she asked for at least one person to represent each county. So I'm proud to say that our representative from York County is Wells Public Library's head of youth services, Allison Herman. It's great to have Allison here. I can do one more.
Sure, sure, okay. Good news is always good.
The hiring of a new police officer. We're pleased to announce that Hunter M. Steves has successfully completed and passed our extensive background check and will be joining the Wells Police Department. Hunter graduated from Massapese High School in Waterboro in 2021. Following graduation, he enlisted in the United States Air Force, where he served honorably from '21 through 2025 as a munition systems technician. During his service, he was stationed at multiple locations across the United States, as well as Kandina Air Base in Okinawa, Japan. Prior to his military service, Hunter worked during the summers with the Waterboro Recreation Department as a camp counselor and in the before and after care program. So he has a lot of work, has done a lot of work with youth, which is wonderful. He comes highly recommended by his former employer for his strong work ethic and dedication. Following a thorough interview process, both the interview committee and the command staff are confident he will be a very valuable asset to our team in his first day of work, which was actually October 14th.
Thank you.
I'll stop there.
That's all right. All right. The good news is good. Anyone have anything they want to share?
Yeah, I, over the weekend, I went to the haunted hayride at Parks and Rec, and that was incredible. They had people on stilts and like chainsaws, and I think they had one of the kids up on like a zip line above us. So I think everybody, all the volunteers that were involved with that, they deserve some accolades. That was well done.
Yeah, I think I can comment very quickly. I believe that I saw 120 volunteers for that event, which is unbelievable.
That's awesome. My one big thing of good news was, obviously, well, we beat York, that's a really good one. The other thing, no, it was Saturday night, we had the band competition. The local bands from all over came down, quite a huge crowd. All the football team went, a bunch of field hockey team, a bunch of other athletes went to cheer on the band, so it was really kind of a cool night for us. The kids actually really enjoyed it and didn't realize how cool it was from the band, so it was a good night for all. I want to congratulate Chad and the band Boosters on running a great show. So that was the big good news for us. Anything else? Next up, we're going to have open the public. We set aside 10 minutes. I want to, right now, publicly apologize for two, me, two weeks ago, I failed on my mission as a chair to enforce the three-minute rule, but not on purpose. There was no nefarious action here. It was just, I looked up, didn't see the timer start, should have stopped the comments. It's my fault. I did not do it, and limited it to three. I apologize for that. I am new to the chair, and it had nothing to do with anything, but just didn't see the three minutes and didn't stop it, so.
You're very kind, because we share in that with you. With oversight on our part here.
It's my fault. So it was nothing to do with anything but my fault. So we, tonight, we will be limiting the open public to three minutes. So you said 10 minutes amount of time, so. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Time's up. Thank you for coming.
That's because you're protecting the time from the last one.
It's all good.
Scott D. Felice again. I'm just coming to remind everybody that this Saturday night at Village by the Sea, there's going to be a comedy night to benefit the Founders Park Community Center. Doors will open at 6:30. The show will start at 7 o'clock. The tickets are only $40. Uh, you can get them online. You can purchase them at the event. And we're selling them at the Elmwood Hotel. So please come join us for a great night for a great cause. Thank you.
Anyone else in public?
Yes. Hi, my name's Janice Campagna. I live here in Wells. And I just wanted to encourage people to really read the initiative won very clearly and fully. The title of this includes it being a voter ID initiative. And I think that a lot of people think that's really common sense to require voter ID. Uh, but if you read further, you'll also see that it limits absentee ballots. It limits the number of days that you can vote early, which is considered absentee ballot. And I think, I know me, I've voted already and I think a lot of people in this room have. Maine should be proud because we have one of the highest levels of voter participation in the country. And that, I think, is something that really speaks to the people of Maine and how involved they are in their communities. I think something that will reduce the voter turnout is not something that we in a democracy really want to encourage. 60% of Maine seniors voted with absentee or early ballots in the last election and over 45% of Mainers overall voted that way. Uh, and again, this is because we really want to encourage people to, to vote, not discourage them. Among the things that this bill includes, and it is 17 changes to the way we run our elections, which are considered some of the safest and best electoral laws in the country with only two cases in 40 years of there being any proven voter fraud. Among those changes are that there would be one drop-off box per municipality, no matter the size of your population. That means Bangor, one drop-off box. Portland, one drop-off, drop-off box. I was wearing my no-on-one, uh, so I'm, that is my view button the other day. And the woman that was waiting on me in the store said, "Thank you. My husband is blind and I need to help him to vote. And my town clerk, who I've known for years, has already told me that what we've done, I won't be able to do." So we will require our seniors, including myself, I can get around fine, but plenty cannot, to include in their absentee ballot a photocopy of their ID. So, you know, just a trip to Staples down the street. I mean, someone who already needs an absentee ballot, adding all of these onerous things. I would just encourage people, make up your own mind, but read beyond just the title of this bill to all the changes that it makes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, again, I'm Cheryl Mills, a resident of Wells. And I also have an invitation, both for the board and the town and the, the community that's watching tonight. Tomorrow night at the Wells Public Library at 6:00 PM, there's going to be a forum on immigration, facts and myths, national and local impact. They're going to provide expert insights into current US immigration policy, processes and practices, and updates and facts concerning immigrants in our communities here in Maine. We have three presenters who are very well-known throughout the state and are experts on immigration. Jenny Beverly, who is an immigration lawyer and for a time served as an immigration judge. Max Brooks, who is staff attorney for the ACLU of Maine. And Lisa Parisio, who is the policy director for the Immigration, Immigrant Legal Advocacy Project. I'm gonna leave a few flyers on the table. Um, hope people will pick them up as they leave and we'd love to see you there. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak during this time? All right, seeing none. Move on to current agenda items. A review and action on accounts payable, advanced check and payroll warrants.
I move to approve and sign the warrant dated October 21, 2025 in the amount of $2,951,892.15. And the advanced check warrant dated October 15, 2025 in the amount of $59,141.79. And the general assistance warrant dated October 21, 2025 in the amount of $725.78.
Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor? Five zero, Cindy. Thank you. Next up, we have update discussion and action on committees, projects, issues and purchases and personnel. First up, we have a discussion and action on the lodging facility advisory committee mission tasks.
And I've asked Mike and Jodeen to be able to present on, on this. They predate my being here and when the committee was actually formed. But as we sat and looked at the committee mission task, it became apparent that all of those tasks appear to have been completed. And so wanted to bring to the board that that had happened and basically maybe some other opportunities to envision for that group.
Good evening again. In your packets, there was a memo included that Jodeen and I put together. We looked back at the history of the lodging committee and, and they were established to tackle various issues in the licensing part of the lodging ordinance and other application procedures that are used for re, renewing licenses on an annual basis with lodging facilities. So there, there was a mission statement that the Board of Selectmen created in 2022. And then it was renewed again the, the next, after a two-year time period of working on items. It was basically a, a two-year and two-year mission statement that was developed. It is an ad hoc committee. So it is appropriate that the Board of Selectmen first create a specific mission for whatever items they should be working on in the timeframe. Typically, at the end of the timeframe, a report is given by the committee. And then the Board of Selectmen look at that and decide where to go from there. Uh, so the last mission statement we had was the 2022 to 2023 lodging community missions task. But then there was one addition to it that's highlighted that was to extend their, their tasks to continue to review the renewal lodging licenses going into the 2024 year. Um, so as of the end of 2024, they don't have really an authorized mission statement to continue working on anything. Uh, so that was the main reason that we wanted to bring it to the Board of Selectmen. And, and I think the committee members are interested in working on other things, but, but they did accomplish a lot. The mission tasks listed in the memo were that, um, they were to look at possible changes to chapter 14552 under lodging facilities. And anything in the, under that chapter would have to go to town meeting for approval. We actually didn't find any changes within 145 to do. There were multiple changes to chapter 15081, which is the lodging license process. And, um, language was developed to help the Board of Selectmen actually in the, in the reviewing and possible revoking of licenses. So language was created for amendments to that zoning ordinance. We did bring that to the board, I think, back in March of this year. But it was at the same exact time where we were at a crunch to get the June ballot finalized. So the Board of Selectmen still needs to conduct the public hearing on that and adopt those changes. Changes to 150 for licensing do not need to go through the voters. Uh, that's an area that the Board of Selectmen can make those changes. One of the items was to tackle the licensing process, as I spoke to earlier. And for two or three years, all the licenses were reviewed by the committee. Uh, the, the application form was revamped several times. Um, and I think the end product was very good. I think the last task that the, or the clerk's office was working on was to make it available for online license renewal. Uh, one of the other items was consideration of creating inspection requirements for lodging units. That was discussed, but, you know, inspection of lodging facilities and the creation of an ordinance to regulate short-term rentals go hand-in-hand, especially for inspection services and, and what would get done. So that was, I think, basically set aside or tabled until we make further development for the short-term rentals. Same thing with the, uh, they were to look at the fee structure of lodging facilities. And fees were discussed and some analysis was done of surrounding community fees. Uh, but that again sort of ties into the short-term rentals. And if we had a licensing fee developed for that new use, then those would tie in together. Uh, so that was something that was sort of tabled until short-term rentals were tackled. And the other item was staffing needs. And whether it would be the fire department, the code office, to be involved with those new inspections or more involved inspections. And that was also sort of deferred until short-term rentals were more evolved as far as licensing and ordinances go. So all the, the mission statements that were part of the previous mission, um, for the most part, have been addressed by the committee. I'm sure, you know, some items, you know, could be discussed more, but it's at the point where the Board of Selectmen need to discuss it, maybe get some input from committee members and decide what a new mission, if any, would entail.
Okay, I, I looked this over and I, I was surprised that, for a co- I didn't realize that we hadn't adopted some of that. But I understood afterwards, yes, that's right, we set it aside for some of that. First of all, um, I think the review, renewal lodging license applications and licenses and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen regarding issuance of each renewal. When they give us the list, they have the opportunity and understand for one thing, all that we were trying to do was to make it consistent and make sure that everyone was in compliance, that somebody had to do the same as everybody else because it was a process to do it. I, I appreciate that when they do that. I, I really think that that's something that they can do and they give it to us. And then if there's a problem with something, they tell us why. You confirm it, you know, we look at it and we make sure that that person or that entity gets up to snuff with everybody else. And then they get their approval for the license. I think that's a great process that we've been doing. And I would like to see, um, that, that committee continue to do that. And can I say the other thing?
Yeah.
And, um, on the other one, yep. On the other one, I think on the part where the fee structure recommendations, we had talked about this and we knew that we're gonna have to talk a lot about this going forward. And I think, um, the recommendation that we would take in regards to that, I would hope, was that the select board and the budget board could meet for a workshop to, so we better understand where they come from. We can hear what they do. We can process it all and put it on our table. And then we meet, I think the Selectmen should meet with the lodging committee and look at what we have been looking at and what we decide and get feedback from them as well. And then we discuss it among ourselves and we have a public hearing on what we come up with. I think that's a, a set of action steps that we could probably take to move that forward. And I know, I think you've been planning on putting that on our docket for that, I believe. But I do think the budget first, the budget board first. Get that all clear and, and worked out because they're gonna be doing their job pretty soon. We want them happy. And then, and anyway, or at least know that guy got listened to. And then, um, and then the lodging. And I think they would give us feedback. We understand that all the lodging, which is as you should. You should be defending your businesses and stuff and what you can, what you think should happen. And we'll listen, and I think the other, one of the entities that we should be listening to to do that. And then in the end, we look at what the town needs, what we can look at. And then there's the, the last thing that I think as a group, as a selectman should look at is have the attorney here to go through again the list of the things that the state allows us to be able to use as a cost for a business license. You know, so that's the last, I think, thing that we would look at to see, uh, are the things we're looking at, are any of these that can fit into that? How would they fit? You already gave us the, the increase on the CIP and all that. That was, that was good. 100, I mean, 87% it looked like, right? That it was. So, um, so I think those things are, are really good. And I think that is something that we really need to put together right away. But I think as far as, um, the other things on the lodging, we, we should look at on the one that we set aside. I know we're waiting for the short-term rental. Really, that's really up to the voters for the next, you know, on that one. We really can't do anything. But in the meantime, if we did let, you know, levy some kind of action on the lodging and are doing some kind of thing for it, that would give us what we would use when the short-term rentals came along. I think we kind of got it backwards a little bit, you know, waiting for the short-term rentals. Maybe we really didn't want to talk about the first one that much, but now we're going to talk about it. And, um, and then we can apply it to the short-term. That was my ideas.
We're working on short-term rentals right now.
I don't.
Yeah.
So I, I actually agree with everything that Kathy pointed out. And I would hate to, really hate to pull the, the plug on the, on the committee itself. We have this short-term rental thing that we're laboring through. And there is no group in this community that has more experience with short-term rentals than the members of the lodging committee. And they, they'll, they will be invaluable to us going forward.
I, I think that's a, a really good point. And, and we should be looking at that. Those are the kind of workshops we should have with those that are impacted by it and understand it better than we do.
May I offer something for your consideration? Transportation. Um, I'm currently in conversation with York County Community Action and in turn with NEPA. And, um, so would like to have you consider maybe how the lodging committee may be able to help us as we look at transportation from the train station to different lodging facilities along Route 1, down into the Agunkwa Corridor and back. And NEPA has pledged 50% of that cost from Memorial Day to Labor Day. And Tom Reinauer from York County Community Action would like to come and present perhaps to the lodging committee, if that was a conduit, and then ultimately to the board. But part of that would be to secure additional funding from our lodging and restaurant facilities and all, to include those in Agunkwa, um, trying to make it a cohort, to run two vans that entire period of time to help bring people into our community and our neighbors to the south and back around. So it may be another op, uh, opportunity.
Great point.
Any comments?
Yeah, do we have a, um, I feel like we, we, um, I, I don't know at one point, will, will Leah, um, have a sort of document that we could present to them for the short term?
She, she will. She, I don't think that's the highest priority right this moment, only because it would be for a June vote. And I think she's very focused on the lodging fees because that needs to be sooner than later. But she is, she's going to build the framework and ordinance and then bring that back. And you may choose to ask for input from a lodging committee group, of course. Um, so she's working on that.
Okay.
So as we, um, our, our charge is to, to create a new chart of work, basically, for the lodging committee.
That is correct.
It would include these things I'm talking about.
Right. So we would, so would you expect we would make a motion to, um, create a new, um, mission task completion and?
Well, we'll just put that on a future agenda.
Well, I know, but there's a-
We'd have to do that in a workshop, wouldn't we?
Right.
Yeah, I would think we gotta workshop this.
We'd have to do that in a, yes, we would have to do that in a workshop. Make a motion to have a workshop to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
There we go.
Okay, there we go.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Five zero.
Okay, thank you, John.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have a discussion and action to approve a corrective municipal quitclaim deed for the following property. Original quitclaim deed was released to the prior owner, Zamela Dave Aliva, in 2006, and not Whitewater Development Corporation, who had taken the title in December of 1995.
I have really no other details than what you have.
That's all right.
I just wonder, how can that happen?
I know, that's what, I know. I don't have the, these question marks, but then I thought, okay, we'll just make the motion.
Yeah.
Are we ready for the motion? Are we ready for the motion?
Yeah.
I move to, I move that the board approve and sign the corrective quitclaim deed to release the lien on the property listed above.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Five zero, Cindy. Thank you. Next up, we have discussion and action to request, on a request to amend the board's prior approval of the purchase of Pierce Class A Pumper, by a gender reflect the reduced purchase price. No way.
Thank you, and my apology. We basically had a slight oversight when we were signing the contract and realized that we were asking you to release the $1,366,000 instead of the reduced price of $1,306,882. So because of that, we wanted to come to you and tell you and ask for you to change the amount that we are requesting to $1,306,882 because of that.
So, so when we did that motion, we had the total amount and then we had the monthly.
Correct. The monthly amount, excuse me, it's not a monthly amount. Correct, the monthly amount, excuse me, it's not a monthly amount, it's an annual amount, of a hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred and six dollars and twenty-eight cents. You did approve that before, and that isn't different. It was all based on the reduced price.
Okay.
So.
It was just the total price, it was wrong.
Right, so we just said the wrong price.
Okay, you know how we can handle this?
We can just.
Just take a motion.
When we get to the minutes, we can just change the number in the minutes.
Well, I think we still have to.
No, we, I think he wants a motion to accept this one.
Can we amend the minutes?
You, no, because the minutes are the minutes.
We have the motion right here.
Right, okay. Okay, you ready for the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I move to amend the Board of Selectmen's prior approval of the purchase of a Pierce Class A pumper fire engine to reflect the revised purchase price of one million three hundred and six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, representing a reduction from the previously approved amount of one million three hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor? Five-zero.
It's clean and doing it.
Thank you for your time.
Discussion, next up, we have discussion and action to accept donations and requests. We have twenty-five dollars from Ernest Nassau to the Town of Wells for the Fuel Assistance Program. Five hundred dollars from the Wells Branch Fire Association to the Town of Wells for Fuel Assistance Program. And then we have the next ones will be a hundred and twenty-five dollars to the Founders Park. We have Richard Witizik and Sherry Hanks, Melanie Smith, Cindy Mitchell, Irene Lambert, Nancy Sullivan, and Paul and Patty LaValle, all to the Town of Wells for the Founders Park Community Station.
I move to accept the generous donations and write letters of thanks to the donors.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Thank you, Cindy, thank you to all those. Next up, we have discussion and action to approve the minutes of the October seventh, two thousand twenty-five. So let me, Jim, I think you have a couple amendments.
I actually have one, the first one, first one was okay. On page two, starting at line twenty-six through twenty-nine, it currently reads, "Motion by Mrs. Chase, second by Mr. McLeod to accept the grant of three hundred and fifty thousand from the land for future Maine Trust Fund and execute all documents as amended, including covenants and restrictions on three-town-owned reservation property." I'd like, that should, really what we did is, as amended, to reflect a reimbursement to the town for the purchase price of the property, including. So we have to add the words after, as amended, to reflect a reimbursement to the town for the purchase of the property.
Period, yeah, thank you, I, because we made that pretty clear.
Yeah, we did.
Two or three times, yeah.
That's all I have.
Cindy, you have that, okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Jim's going to give me a hard copy anyway.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of twenty, ten twenty-five as amended.
Second.
October seven.
I mean, October. October seventh.
October seventh.
October seventh, I thought it was us. October seventh, as amended, thank you.
Moved in second, all those in favor? Five-zero.
Thank you for catching that, John.
Next up, open to the public at this time, we have ten minutes aside. All right. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Report.
Very briefly, I've covered a number of items already. Just so you know, we're changing up how we'll be doing some of our budget work. We're going to be using electronic platform called ClearGov. And department heads now are working on their CIP submissions. And I think we'll find this to be a little bit challenging at first, but I think in the long run, it will be a great way for us to begin presenting our CIP and operating budgets with a lot of pictorals and good explanations, and it's all going to be through electronic platform. First installment of taxes is due October thirtieth to avoid any interest. Fire department's running out, so currently at fourteen hundred and fourteen calls as of this morning. The harbor is preparing for the winter, and crossover eastern shore is being taken out. I mentioned about two of three new police officers have begun their roles. They will attend the pre-service academy, which we will be hosting in Wells this year, starting November tenth. We mentioned about the hayride and a hundred and twenty volunteers, absolutely phenomenal. It appears they raised just over thirteen thousand dollars. Christmas tree sales, believe it or not, will begin on November twenty-ninth. And visit with Santa night will take place on December fifth. Public Works has moved over to their winter schedule, and we still have a little bit of paving left, which will be Willow Way and Pool Drive. And so far, eleven hundred absentee ballots have been issued for the November fourth election. Clam licensing is coming up, I believe that's on November twenty-fifth. And this is National Friends of Library Week. There's an interest in expanding the adult craft programs at the library this year. The Children's Halloween Party will take place on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth at six PM. And our Labor and Employee Relations Person, Cassidy O'Dwyer, she'll be attending a labor law training tomorrow. And one of the things we're going to be instituting, and Cassidy actually brought this up in her interview process, which I thought was really great. Oftentimes, we always do exit interviews. This time, we're going to be doing employee satisfaction interviews, so that we get a sense for what's working well and where's areas that we can tweak to enhance our employee engagement. So she'll be rolling those out individually with people. She'll be soon coming in to work some midnight shifts to integrate with police and fire that work the overnight shifts. And Volunteer Appreciation Breakfast is Friday, October twenty-fourth, nine AM at Johnson Hall. We have about a hundred people anticipated, and Rebecca will be attending a communications course hosted by MMA next Thursday. So lots of things going on, people are busy, but all good.
Thank you. Next up, we have select board comments, subcommittee reports, or individual member comments, anyone?
I just, go ahead, you first.
Please, you're first.
I just want to say that, to the Chief of Police, I can't imagine that that was an easy decision to come to. And I respect her a lot for taking in public feedback throughout the whole process, meeting with everybody and hearing our perspectives. And I appreciate everyone that's been involved over the past few months, who have come out to these meetings and spoken on, you know, every aspect of the issue. And I think that this, it goes a long way to, at least on a personal level, repairing my trust in the department. And it's a good, good step in the right direction, I really appreciate it.
I will pass that on to her when she returns.
Yeah, I just have one thing. I attended a brief Founders Park Community Center meeting before we came here, where we approved a town line mailing for the brick program. And it's, this is, it's going to go out in the beginning of November, and it's going to be a great opportunity for, a great gifting opportunity to honor family and friends by buying them a brick around the holidays, so.
That's awesome.
Just thought I'd mention that.
I will say that I got one for all my family last year, each one, and you'd be surprised, even the younger ones thought it was fabulous, that, oh, my name, I'm going to be looking for my name when I go down there. Yeah, they were really funny, so you may think that it wasn't, but even they thought it was impressive, and it's a great thing, and it supports a great thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's going to be awesome.
That's all I have.
You got nothing, that's all, all right. Nothing else, Jim?
Yep.
All right. All right, seeing none, we're going to move into an executive session to discuss applicants to various boards and committees pursuant to one MRS four oh five six A.
I move to executive session to discuss the applicants to various boards and committees pursuant to one MRS of section four oh five six A.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor? Five-zero.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I make a motion that we appoint Joshua Caruthers to the Planning Board alternate position, and that we appoint Kevin Marler to the Conservation Commission alternate position.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor? Five-zero, thanks, guys, and thank you.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor? Good night, everyone.